I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Just a friendly reminder that this meeting is being recorded, both video and audio. First item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve our August 27, 2019 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing non-lawary, to pull the committee, please.
Abstain.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the September 10, 2019 minutes. I do have one correction under item four, old business. Actually, I'm looking at the wrong one. See, this is why I don't like my computer. It says, under the fundraising, do you have it in front of you, Laurie? It says, I made a comment that it's, be with me one minute. Chairman Herten said it is not the school committee policy to review. It is school committee policy to review, not approve. So just getting the word "not." So it's under old business, item four, item A. So it's just, it is, it says here it is not the school committee, so just remove the word "not." Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the September 10 minutes as amended.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Abstain.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda, September 10, 2019 joint meeting minutes. And again, I just have a quick correction. In the first paragraph, the second sentence, it says Chairman Herten publicly, and if you could just insert the word thanked, Mr. Schenover for his commitment. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the September 10, 2019 joint meeting minutes as amended.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, to pull the committee, please.
Abstain.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Gogan.
Good evening, everyone. What's everyone doing?
Good.
Come on.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm going to start with a personnel update tonight. I'd like to let you know that Shelby Pekarzik has resigned. She was a middle school ABA paraprofessional. We have hired Kelsey Upstrom as our grade six middle school teacher, and there's been some transfers. Susan Taste has worked at the Park Avenue Breakfast Program for four years. She is now the breakfast coordinator at Park Ave Elementary School. Second on my agenda tonight is to give you an enrollment update. As of September 19th, we are servicing 1,844 students, 817 at Park Avenue Elementary, and 591 at Webster Middle School, and 436 at Bartlett High School. I'm pleased also to give you a brief update, and Chairman Herten, please join in, on the MSBA School Building Committee has been formed. We held our first meeting, the building committee meeting, and it went very well. Chairman Hurtman is the chair of that committee. Mr. Ted Avalis is the vice chair, and the secretary is Lisa Kontos. Our next meeting dates are October 16th and November 4th. There'll be more meetings than that. Those are just two ahead of us. I do want to remind the committee that this is a wonderful opportunity for the community to renovate Bartlett. If we get through the eligibility period and the feasibility period, we're right now at a 78.6% reimbursement level. I don't know if you wanted to add anything else on the school building committee?
No, just that obviously, I thought it went very well, and I think based on both the voting and non-voting members, I think we have a very positive group that will work well together. But also, more importantly, we have people that are bringing different expertise and views, which is always important. As Mr. McCarron knows, serving on a couple of those committees for a couple of years, the most important perspective, from my opinion, is to make sure that it doesn't turn political, which I don't believe, and it will, based on the members. And so unfortunately, a colleague of mine on this committee learned from member Naparata of how quickly to nominate somebody, but I will not mention who that was.
You're welcome.
I thought it went very well, and to your point, it's a lot of work that we need to do. It's important work, and hopefully, you know, the first timeline that we need to meet is to try to get town meeting approval by March 30th, if I remember correctly, or somewhere around there, to get money approved for the feasibility study, which would be the first step in the project.
So we do have some timelines. There will be some information coming to this school committee for the December 10 meeting, and then the feasibility amount will go to the selectmen on December 16th, and then hopefully, a special town meeting in January to give us ample time. I think one of the things that I want to just speak about is the importance of people really knowing what's going on with building a better Bartlett for tomorrow. I don't have a hashtag line, but really what we're doing right now is we're in the process of trying to create what we want on paper four years from now, five years from now, educationally, for the educational questionnaire. The educational questionnaire is due at the end of this month, and it's in process because we are making sure that the teachers at Bartlett by departments have some say, have some ability to start to dream, but making their dreams connect to programming, which is hard, innovative programming. So we will be bringing that educational questionnaire to you after it's submitted so that you can take a look at the vision. I wanted to also let you know that the capital improvement plan has been submitted. That was done by Monique Perangeli, and that's part of our, part of the checks that we have to do. Number four on my list tonight is to let you know that the circuit breaker reimbursement came in $70,000 higher than we anticipated in our budget, so we were pleased to see that. And as you know, we certainly have high numbers of special education students in our district to service, and so that money is, will be used for special education. And as you may or may not know, today is the public release of MCAS results for 2019. And we're going to share a very quick overview, district quick overview tonight. I do want to let you know that the administrative team is meeting on Thursday as a whole group with some of our DSAC SSOS consultants to really look and plan action steps, three or four action steps at each building to address some of the gaps. But I do have some good news. We are not deemed a district requiring assistance any longer. And I think it's been quite a while since Webster has been able to say the district itself is not being deemed as a district in need of requiring assistance. Having said that, I do want to publicly say that there's still a lot of work to do here. We do have schools requiring assistance, Bartlett High School and the Webster Middle School, and we do have areas where we can certainly improve. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Daniels to speak a little bit about our broad view.
I just want to point out some of the positive highlights. I think Dr. Gogan, you know a little bit about history. We've been at level for many, many years. And from 2017 to '08, they stopped actually leveling us, but we still needed, we had the standings of needing technical assistance. So new to this year is that we're not being required to have that, that technical assistance or intervention, which is really good news. So the positive highlights, again, this is the bird's eye view. We will be coming to you in a couple of weeks, or maybe, you know, the next meeting, doing a deeper dive into the MCAS data as we do it with the building principals and their instructional leadership team people. So I want to stop by saying, we've come to you on many occasions requesting funds or, you know, adopting a new curriculum program, and I really believe that we, we all believe that we're starting to see the fruits of our labor in that, aligning our curriculum and our resources, teaching grade level standards, the amount of professional development that we provide teachers so that they can do, do the good work that needs to be done with everything that we get them. So really, it comes down to the hard work of the teachers and also, we can't forget the students. In the report, they, in the overview, they separate the two schools. So they call it the non-high school, school, non-high school, and then the high school. So I'm going to just report first on the non-high school, which would be your K to eight level. Some of the highlights, and you'll see a theme going on here. Math achievement. Math achievement went up for all students and also the lowest performing students. So in your report, you'll see that there's, when you have time to really take a look at it, and kind of small numbers. So they rate it between non-high school and high school, but then within each one, they have a all students and then lowest performing students. So we gain points for each of those categories. So in math achievement, we scored pretty well for all our students and the lowest, I know I'm repeating myself, lowest performing students. Science achievement, we gained a lot of points for all students. Then we get into the ELA and math growth, how much did our kids grow from, from one year to the next. We scored both, in both categories, all students and lowest performing students. And then we also gained points for progress toward English proficiency, and that is really dealing with the percentage of students meeting targets in keeping track to English proficiency within six years. And then the non-high school also gained points for their chronic absenteeism, meaning we reduced that amount, in particular for the Hispanic Latino category. And then when we get into the high school, some of the positive highlights would be math achievement, where we gained the points from our lowest performing students. I say the new math curriculum that Jill Chapdeline had brought in, is working with the teachers, have really made a big impact in math. And then we have the ELA and math growth. We got it for all students. We gained some points on the extended engagement rate. That's your five-year cohort. And I kind of went into a little bit more the detail reports of this because it really was a standout. Not only did we gain points for all students, but it, in particular, high needs, our economically disadvantaged, and our Hispanic and Latino groups. The annual dropout rate reduced, which is good. This was for all students, high needs, economically disadvantaged, Hispanic, Latino, and white. So all across the board, we have, we have reduced that, which is really positive. And then chronic absenteeism for the high school, we gained some points for the lowest performing students. Dr. Gogan, if you wanted to add anything more to that?
Well, I just want to state that all of the work that we've been doing as a team, school committee, central office, teachers and staff, has really been focused on what's happening in the classroom. So we've purchased new curriculums, we've added ongoing professional development, and we're in our third year with professional development for our reading program and our third year for Looney Math. Most districts don't do that extensive PD. So we are seeing some results, that we're on track with grade level content. We do have areas that we will be digging into, but I think the biggest thing that points out to me in this year's data is that some of our students that we're not moving, the high need students, the economically disadvantaged students, we're seeing some movement. So I'm very pleased about that, and I want to thank our teachers and our Webster School community for continuing to progress. But we will be bringing a much more detailed report to you after we dissect it in many different layers with the admin team, and then again, the administrators are bringing it back to their teachers, and so you'll be hearing some more about that. And if I move on to my next number on my agenda, last Friday was the United Way of Caring, and once again, we have had a number of volunteers from MAFRA and from the United Way come and help us clean up the area outside the middle school and the Park Avenue School, and I want to give a public thank you to them for their repeat performance. It's, I actually spent the day with them. It's a very fun day, but it's very hard work. And as you can see the results, the buildings look very pretty. In my other updates, I want to give the school committee some information. I want to thank our Bay Path Health Tech students who are on site, helping with height and hearing checks. I want to give a shout out about the Nichols Honors induction. I know, Logan, you're going to speak a little bit about that, so I won't say anymore. I want to let you know that I am heading to Florida with Representative Joe McKenna on Sunday to visit the Amokale Foundation, and they just updated the agenda, and they're very thrilled to have us come, and it's going to be a busy couple of days there. I'll be looking forward to bringing back that information to you. I want to also let you know that we will be hosting a substitute training program here tomorrow night at 4:00, and again, on Thursday at 10:00. We put an ad in the paper. We're looking for substitute teachers. We have sent that ad and that poster to every college around. We are actively trying to have a substitute list of teachers, so we're hoping tomorrow this is a full room. So anyone who's listening that may be interested in substitute teaching, please stop by the district offices tomorrow night at 4:00 or Thursday at 10:00. I do want to also let you know that we will be hosting a sped pack advisory meeting here on October 16th in the district offices, and I want to remind everyone to save the date. Chad Hymus is presenting at the Gladys E. Kelly Library on October 21st from 6:00 to 7:00. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Dr. Gogan? Hearing none unless, assuming Mr. Zajak and Ms. Nylan don't object and the members don't mind, I am going to just skip to item four, student update. Logan Paranto, I know he's probably got a few things to do considering he plays this silly sport usually on Friday nights, but now Saturdays, and has a couple hard classes. So good evening, Logan.
Good evening. I'd like to start off with talking about Picture Day, which was held on September 19th at Bartlett. Next, the new Wind Block, which is every Thursday is giving students time to do homework, turn in missing assignments, or get peer help from teachers or students. I personally love the Wind Block. It helps me out, it helps all the students around me out. It's great. The 2023 Nichols Honors Academy Cohort was inducted on September 12th at Nichols College. Some school clubs, the Bartlett High School Art Club held signups on September 18th. The Medical Careers Club held signups all last week. The Drama Club held signups on September 16th and have started their production of their upcoming play, The Crucible, which is about the Salem Witch Trials. Students that were interested in joining the Deca Club went to the meeting, which was held on September 20th. Athletics, boys and girls soccer teams took on Auburn and Oxford, and also the girls' soccer team played Burncoat in Southbridge. The volleyball team had matches against Tantascua Millbury and had a very good match yesterday against Grafton, having a 3-2 set victory. The golf team had matches against Lester, Oxford, and Tantascua. The boys and girls cross-country teams had a meet with Lester, and the football team picked up wins against Sutton and Bay Path. For National Honor Society, there is a community service opportunity for NHS members to go to Christopher Heights and interact with their residents. The NHS induction date will be held on October 24th for incoming juniors that will be inducted and seniors. The student council, for student council, student council helped parents find their way around the school during the open house September 12th, and that's about it for tonight. Any questions or comments?
Any questions or comments for Logan? Mind if I ask you a question about something Dr. Gogan presented?
Yeah.
So obviously, you've had to sit there and take unfortunately a few MCAS tests in your young life. As a parent, as a school committee member, as a member of Webster, how do you view the performance of an individual or as a district related to MCAS versus what you've obtained personally as an education here in Webster?
My education at Webster has been very good. The MCAS scores, for me personally, I've passed all of my MCAS scores. I haven't had to retake any. As my, my whole senior class, we, I've only seen like a couple of kids that didn't pass, it was mostly science that we didn't pass, a couple of kids. Besides that, my class did a very good job with MCAS, a lot of positivity, and besides that, nothing else.
Thank you very much. I'll try not to ask you an annoying question every meeting, but popped into my head. Thank you. Jumping back to our agenda, the next item is the Business Manager Report, and I assume, Dr. Gogan, we will be turning this over to Chef Nylan. Good evening, Chef Nylan.
Good evening, everybody. What I want to present tonight is just a brief overview of summer meals, and then a project, a new project that we're going to be involved in concerning breakfast after the bell, breakfast in the classroom, whatever you want to call it these days. So the big thing to report about this summer is that we added, which you probably know, three community sites, which we're very excited to do. We added Hoops for Hope, which ran forever, like from the third week in June until the end of the Summer Meals program, which is the Webster Police Department Basketball Camp at Park Ave. North Village, two days a week, the library, one day a week. And in addition, we did about 400 meals at Head Start. This would be our first summer with Head Start, but they're not technically a summer site, so they're not included in the Summer Meals program. That's just a continuation of the basically vended meals that we do for them. So first time out, just adding three sites at once, it went really well. We had a training here for all the site monitors and, you know, to go over all the paperwork that they need to do for DESI and all that, and I heard very positive things from all three programs, actually. The library, I have my eye on to definitely expand that. We did that through the children's librarian, but, you know, just easing in, I think hopefully the staff saw how easy it was to do. The other nice thing about the library is it was on a Friday, and there was no special ed program on Friday in the summer, so we had several parents come on Fridays who said their kids usually eat during the week during the program. So that was really nice and unexpected. So all in all, it went really, really well. That's what Summer Meals is supposed to do. It's flexible. The whole idea of the program is you meet the kids where they are in the summer. So I ran into kids that I know outside the library, you know, who were saying, oh, is it another day? So that's something that we're definitely looking at expanding next year. So we did up from, we added about 1,300 meals this summer from last summer. 400 of those were accounted for by the new programs. I say the other ones are probably breakfast. I think we did more breakfast at the middle school this year than we did at Park Ave. So adding the breakfast meal in the summer has been very successful. We didn't, I want to definitely give a shout out to Tiffany Jarmalovich, who is in her third year as our, as our Summer Meals manager, who does a great job inventorying what we have, not to get into the weeds on that, but she really does a very detailed inventory on what we have, and we build the menu around that, so we try not to purchase a lot of food. And then the cook, Marcella Bugby, is the cook now for the third year. So between the two of them and the rest of the staff, we actually didn't add a position, even though we added, well, actually 1,700 meals, because 13 plus Head Start. So that's pretty good. They were able to absorb all that and just kind of, you know, economy of scale. After a while, if you're doing more, you're just doing it faster and better, basically. So that was all very, very positive. According to me, we made a little profit this summer, like we did last summer, but I will let Monique be the judge of that when she gets back. That's just simple comparing revenue, the claim with the expenses. So that's a good model because we haven't quite been able to achieve that during the year, and it has to do a lot with being efficient with labor and also really drilling down on your inventory and what's there and building your menu off of that. The only other thing I wanted to say is that again, for the second year, we were able to employ a Bartlett High student with some hours in Summer Meals, which was really nice. This year as the monitor at the library, and last year, we employed a student as a graphic designer. So any questions about Summer Meals before I move on to breakfast?
I have a question. How do you handle the logistics?
That's what we do.
I know that's what you do, but the numbers, I mean, just jump off the page.
It's, it's...
I mean, you don't need to go into the weeds too much.
No, but it's just an operations thing in a kitchen. It's literally just, once you get it down and you're laying out, you're making 25 packaged sandwich meals. When you're making 75, you just get faster. That's just how it works when you scale up like that, simply.
And then getting them to the other locations?
That was, well, our Jack Kelly, who's our driver during the year, helped us out with that. North Village has a vehicle and picked up, which was a huge help, actually.
Okay.
At Hoops for Hope, we technically did a supper, but we made, obviously, we made them during the lunch when we were there, and we just, it's in the same building that we ran the program out of, so we leave them in the cooler.
Okay.
So that's, and I think I, we, the library, we drew straws. I drove some, Tiffany Jarmalovich drove some, I think Jack drove one, so we drew straws for the library.
Okay.
That is something to consider. I mean, if, if we were to add other programs or add other days, the delivering is something to consider.
Sure, sure. Exactly. Okay. I mean, it's just, I happen to work for a company called FedEx, so I mean, you know, while you're saying these things, my mind is going, you know. Why should you do all that?
It's funny, it gets, it gets easier.
Yeah, yeah.
As you do more, it actually gets easier. So that, you know, we handled it. Great staff. I mean, that helps a lot, so.
Great job. Congratulations.
So moving on to breakfast. So we now have breakfast in the classroom, breakfast after the bell, whatever you want to call it, district wide, because we rolled it out at Bartlett in the beginning of the year. It's kind of limping along there, but that's what it takes. That's what it takes at the middle school. We've talked about that, and especially the Bartlett kids are not used to breakfast in the classroom, so they kind of got to get used to this. One of my issues with breakfast in the classroom has been, it's, it's all well and good to say we want to build participation and more kids eat, but what are they eating? So the options for breakfast in the classroom, in my opinion, are not great because the delivery method, they go to the classroom, they really have to be individually wrapped, so that means you're purchasing processed stuff, which I don't even do for lunch, but you kind of have to do it for breakfast in the classroom. So during our, these cohort meetings that we have, I, I started talking with Mass Farm to School, and in the end, Mass Farm to School designed a program and chose two districts to deal with, with this new program called Farm to Breakfast, a collaboration with Mass Farm to School. So I'm just going to briefly read their talking points about what this breakfast program is that we're going to be involved with for the next 18 months with Mass Farm to School. It's us and Salem Public Schools, which is a similar district, similar director to myself. I think they're bigger than us, but very similar demographics to Webster also, funded by Blue Cross Blue Shield, and the purpose is to explore how do we get healthier items into our breakfast in the classroom? And by that, I don't mean, you know, Pop-Tarts that are whole grain. I don't consider that a healthier item. How do we get more scratch cooked items? How do we do that? How do we get more protein, i.e. eggs and sausage and stuff like that? And then fresh produce, processed fresh fruit that especially little kids will actually eat, seeing as how Park Ave is 870 of our breakfasts every day. So Mass Farm to School will work with two districts to implement a healthier school breakfast model, and the five components of the program are menu development, including assessment of student and family preferences, recipe... student and family preferences, recipe testing, et cetera. Promotion, including developing materials to make the case for scratch cooking to all stakeholders. Breakfast implementation, which we have already done. Evaluation, and then replication of these efforts, if, successful efforts, to other schools around Massachusetts. So it's just now in the planning stages, but there is some funding attached to it. There's a little bit of funding for the district attached to it, so it's not going to cost us anything. And it'll be really interesting to see how it goes and what we end up with. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Nyland? Let me just reiterate, Ms. McCarras, because I wrote it down, an increase in 1,300 meals is pretty remarkable, and that it was done at or below budget. So let me just, again, thank you and your staff for a wonderful job.
You're welcome.
Moving on with the agenda, the next item on the agenda is the principal report, Michael Zajak, Webster Middle School. Good evening, Mr. Zajak.
Good evening, good evening. Well, it was a great opening, a lot of work to get the building going. The maintenance crew was just phenomenal, what they've done. We actually provided some extra storage space for the breakfast in the classroom. The program has grown tremendously, so we've actually used some allocated space to build in, so they have expanded their program in isolation. But it did a great start. It was a great start. Students were great. I was able to meet with all the students the first day of school, like I've done for many years, and talk about upcoming events, expectations and that. And the students have really grasped onto it, let's just say that much. Sports are often running. I always ask the students, I was talking to a football player the other day, and I said, so did you win? They said, no. I said, did you have fun? He says, yes, I had three tackles. And it's, it's great. And it's great because we had some openings, you know, with some changes in staffing, and people stepped up. They did not plan to coach, but then their comment to me was, I do not want our students to lose out. And so I had staff who had planned, had family responsibilities, things change, and they stepped forward and just took on the coaching load. And I really am pleased to say that we have full teams, our football team's up to 30 students. It's impressive, it really is. And they go out there and they have fun. We have some young ladies who are on the team, and they're aggressive, they're doing a great job. Open house was last week. I started off with, first, a presentation I've done for many years, talking to the parents. It was well-attended. I was really pleased to be able to introduce the new faculty, in particular, the interim Dean of Students, Dan Kelly, who has really jumped in. He has made his presence known. He's formed, he's always formed positive relationships with his kids, but now he's forming them five through eight. And it was interesting, Mr. Kelly was not available in the building today, and some students were looking for him in the lunchroom and things like that. So it really was a great open house, was well-attended by parents. We had, we had a number of students from National Junior Honor Society there, helping parents find their way. And I just found out today that we have 38 students being inducted. And what's nice is that under the guidance of Lori Foley, we've opened it up to seventh graders now this year. So, which is wonderful. It really rewards those students. So what we're doing now is informing the sixth graders this year that their performance, academic performance, is going to influence their selection as seventh graders. So if, the program has really evolved from our first year, when I was a first year here, we were, we inducted them in May. But now, it's a club. And, you know, last year, we had students volunteer time to come in to work in the building during half-days. They went over to Park Avenue to help out with childcare. You know, they continued to expand that program, and I think expanding it means opening it up to other students. And that's why I'm really excited that we have 38 coming on board. One topic I'll be bringing forward in the next couple of weeks is Washington DC. We had a phenomenal trip last year. I've done this trip for many years, but I'll tell you, last year was, the students were incredible. They really were. They really were, I was impressed with them. I was impressed with the parents. We had, we had almost had like a four-to-one ratio. We had so many parents going, I think we had 27 parents going and 88 students. So it was a great turnout, and we'll hope, looking forward to another one. I just got the price in. It's pretty much the same as last year. So I'm really pleased that I'm able to get the prices low. And we did some great fundraising last year, and some staff really came forward and offered scholarships, which is the first time ever seeing that happen, when, when staff members are coming forward and saying, we want to sponsor students. And that really was wonderful. So next, in the next two weeks, I'll be bringing forward a proposal for the next trip, and hopefully I'll get your support. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Zajak? Just on behalf of the committee, we wish you and your staff the best, obviously. It probably feels like you've been in school longer than three or four weeks, but it has kind of just begun, so.
It's settling in. It's settling in. Anything, it's, you know, you start up and you get your bumps, and you deal with the bumps, and you keep moving forward. So it's, but it's good to be back. It's lonely in the building.
Oh, I made the mistake once of saying that summer is slow, so I'm not going to even mention.
You remember that night?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item five, old business. We don't have anything this evening under old business. Item six, new business. The first item under new business is appoint a school committee secretary. As the members are aware, with Mr. Senevert's resignation, we had to appoint a new vice chair, which occurred at the last meeting. That was Mrs. Siddiqui. Mrs. Siddiqui was our secretary, so now we need to appoint a new school committee secretary. So I will open it up for nominations for school committee secretary.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Napparata.
I nominate Sheila Blythe for secretary.
They don't learn, do they?
Seriously, I, I gave great time even.
There's one nomination. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations from the members? Hearing none, Lori, would you poll the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Napparata. Next item on the agenda is approval memorandum of agreement, Webster Educators Association. As my wife is a member of the WEA, I will recuse myself from this agenda item and ask Mrs. Siddiqui to please chair this agenda item.
Dr. Gogan, can you tell us a little bit about the memorandum?
Yes, I can. First, I'd like to say that I'm very pleased with our relationship with WEA this year. We meet monthly and are talking much more frequently about just everything. The collaboration has extended into something that's really wonderful, so I'm very pleased about that. So in our most recent meeting, we were talking about some of the struggles that we're having. And one of them was at Bartlett High School, where we did not have someone step up to be the Social Studies Department Chair. So we brainstormed, and we would like to put this memorandum in front of you, where the English department head takes the Social Studies and History underneath her wing and will be paid the stipend of $462 per department member, as it lists in the contract. So kind of combining the English and History into a Humanities Department for this school year, that's part one of this memorandum of agreement. And then the other part is, the middle school and high school teachers are supposed to stay after school to help students, one day a week. And in the contract, it lists Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And we have a lot of people staying on Monday and/or Friday. So they actually brought this up to us and wanted to open it up to be Monday through Friday. So we'd like to modify that language to Monday through Friday. So those are the two items on this memorandum of agreement.
Any questions or comments from the committee? I actually just have one question, where it says the stipend is $462 per department member. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. There's a set stipend in our contract, and I don't have the contract. And for the high school, it's for being a department head or a content leader at the middle school or an IL team, team member at the elementary school. At the high school, it's a little different. They pay based on the number of people in the department. So if there's four people in the history department, it's $462 times four for your stipend. So it's based on the number of people. So the, with this agreement, the English department head will get paid $462 for the English members and for the history members to cover the stipend. And that's the language that was in the contract to begin with, for the high school.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Webster Educators Association and the Webster School Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Lori, would you poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Obstain. Thank you, Mrs. Siddiqui. One thing I did forget to mention before we jump to the next item. Dr. Gogan did mention on October 21st, we do have a special guest coming just for the members' calendars. That is our annual town meeting as well. It was an unintended oversight, scheduling both at the same night, but I do want the members to be aware that the annual town meeting is held the same night. I believe the special usually starts at 7:00, and the annual town meeting typically will start right after that, so. Next item on the agenda is review, transfer, signing of bills, payroll, and vouchers. I will entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you poll the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned.